The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
I will call to order the October 20th meeting of the Cary Planning and Zoning Board. And we will begin by adopting an agenda, and I understand we have a slight modification. And you have a...
That's correct, Mr. Chair. I move that we adopt the agenda with the following modification, that we pull from the agenda 14 REZ-05, High House Road South. This is at the request of the applicant, and so I move we adopt the agenda with that modification.
We have an emotion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Evangelista, and a second from...I've been told I have to call out our names. So, a second from Mr. Buck.
Thank you.
And then we will move on to approving our September 15th regular meeting minutes. Do we have any amendments hearing? Could I get a motion from somebody who is at that meeting? We have...I should explain here, we have four new members on our board tonight, and so since they weren't at the meeting, they can't very well approve the agenda. I'm sorry, was that you?
That was me.
Mr. Rogers, is a move we approve the...
I shall second.
Mr. Evangelista, seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries unanimously. We have no public hearings tonight, so I'm not going to go through the procedures for public hearings, and we're going to drop right down to our cases without public hearings. Since we had case 14 REZ-05 pulled from our agenda, we will start with case 14 REZ-13, Crosspoints Church YMCA. Ms. Granen, you're going to educate us.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request for rezoning of approximately 7.03 acres located at 6911 Carpenter Fire Station Road. The subject property is shown highlighted in yellow on the south side of Carpenter Fire Station Road. And here's a zoomed-in aerial view of the subject property that shows the existing Crosspoint Church, and then the area that is the subject of the rezoning, which is currently vacant and partially cleared. Cary's land use plan was recently amended to designate this area for commercial. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the proposed zoning is general commercial conditional use. The applicant provided an exhibit to show how this commercial use would apply to just a portion of the property and does not impact the church use. The proposed condition would be to limit the use to commercial indoor/outdoor recreation facilities and office and institutional uses that are allowed in the general commercial zoning district. And there was a recent tweaking of the zoning condition that is shown in your staff report, just to help clarify this a little bit, that the way it's worded now in the staff report says that uses shall be limited to commercial indoor recreation facilities with outdoor accessory uses, including but not limited to swimming pools. So what this is helping clarify is that this would not allow an outdoor athletic field or some sort of commercial athletic field, but if there were a swimming pool allowed with a use, say for example, a YMCA, then that would be a permitted use with an indoor facility. The applicant has also proposed a number of traffic mitigations, which were identified in the traffic study 14 TAR 385, and those are detailed in your staff report. Property owners within 800 feet of the entire subject property were notified by mail. Because this was a portion of a larger tract, our notification extended out 800 feet beyond the overall boundary of the subject property and not just the area that was proposed for rezoning. We had two calls from adjacent property owners voicing support for the proposed rezoning, and there were no protest petitions submitted. The subject property is impacted, as shown on our GIS maps, by a stream buffer, and field determination of this feature will be required at the time of site plan review. Cary's Parks' Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan identifies a greenway trail along the southern portion of the subject property. And Cary's Transportation Plan identifies Carpenter Fire Station Road as a thoroughfare, and therefore a streetscape is going to be required along that roadway. There's a transit route on NC 55, a triangle transit route, and that's highlighted in yellow. This concludes staff's presentation. At this time, I'd like to call upon the applicant to come forward and speak to the request, and then staff is available for your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Topp, and I'm here representing the church for their proposed rezoning. As Deborah pointed out, we're proposing to go from R 40 to commercial general use. There was a land use plan amendment that accompanied the rezoning that was recommended unanimously by this board, and council approved it on their consent agenda at their last meeting on October 17th. Just a brief little history, the proposed rezoning came about because of a need for additional recreational opportunities in West Cary. And as pointed out, the conditions that we are offering does provide this need that has been identified. And by conditioning the rezoning to the limited uses, the uses are complementary to the church and also to the surrounding area. With the growth of West Cary, the residents have felt the need for the additional recreational opportunities in the area for quite some time. The proposed use has the potential of either being a Y or another type of commercial recreational facility to serve the area until such time that the Town of Cary will actually be in a position to offer services through their capital budgeting efforts. The proposed development will meet all Town of Cary regulations. We have offered buffers and streetscapes consistent with the proposed land development ordinance. Also, as Deborah pointed out, we have offered conditions that address transportation improvements. We have worked with two other cases in the area, along with staff, to identify the transportation conditions that we are offering. The two other cases came before this board, of which they were also recommended for approval. Several improvements were identified in all three zoning cases. Crosspoint Church very much recognizes the impact that their proposed use will have on the area. And working with the applicant of the other two cases and with the transportation staff, Crosspoint Church agreed to do what we believe is the most costly improvement that will help greatly with the traffic in the area. And as pointed out by Deborah, also, the list of improvements are identified in the staff report. Just in summary, we believe that the use is an excellent...the proposed zoning, excuse me, is an excellent use of the property. There is a demand for recreational services in the area. At the public hearing, there was no opposition. Actually, several council members expressed support of the request at their July public hearing. And we do believe that the church has stepped up to the plate in offering the off-site improvements that we have that are in your staff report. Again, would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and on behalf of the church, we ask for your support. Thank you. And there are members of the church here tonight, and also Ed Tang, the engineer, if there are additional technical questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I want to ask if we have any questions from the board. Ms. Granen?
I don't disagree with the use. I think that's fine. I do have some questions, though, about the traffic improvements. Not so much that I agree or disagree. I'm not sure I understand them all. You know, in particular, you know, I travel 55 in the morning and the afternoon, so I'm aware that this is a really large bottleneck already. And, you know, in the mornings, it's not too bad, but there's not much capacity for left-hand turns into Carpenter Fire Station Road. And a lot of people do turn there. So I didn't...and I didn't notice that anyone had offered up any additional storage in that left turn lane. And then the second would be traveling south in the afternoon, traffic backs up there for miles. And I think that's more a function of the two stoplights and how they operate, but this is going to make that worse. So, you know, the changes that the town are proposing to make in that area, you know, what's the timing?
Mr. Jensen is going to speak to the traffic study information.
Good evening.
Aye.
There were, particularly in this area, there were some improvements that were done by a private developer in association with a Parkside Town Commons project. They actually added, going northbound on Highway 55, making a left-hand turn onto Carpenter Fire Station. They actually added double left turn lanes at that intersection. So that improvement that you see in the staff report, actually, since the staff report was first written many, many months ago, that improvement has already taken place. In addition, they've lengthened the southbound left turn lane on Highway 55 as you want to turn left onto Marshall Carpenter Road. So, there's...and there's also been some improvements with the signalization at that intersection. So, there's already been some improvements in that area that have taken place. The long-term project that was outlined in your staff report is that the Town of Cary has a bond project to realign Marshall Carpenter Road and align it with the existing Carpenter Fire Station Road. It would be basically doing a grade-separated structure at the railroad there as well. So that whole configuration is going to get changed dramatically as soon as that project gets done through the design process and we start construction on that. So there are many improvements being looked at currently right now in that immediate area that have already taken place or are going to be taking place. The improvements that were outlined in the staff report that the applicant has offered to make were strictly associated with the impacts that they were going to have to the infrastructure in that area. They're not required to solve all the issues, but they're required to...when the traffic study was prepared, they were to look at those impacts at certain intersections that were in close proximity, and they were looked at the findings of how can we mitigate back to what pre-existing conditions were built if this particular property did not develop. So, it doesn't...it still has maybe a poor level of service, but they're trying to mitigate back to what the condition would be and make it no worse than it is. So, and again, they've pooled their resources with a couple other developments that want to build in this area to each of them do a proportionate amount of improvement so that holistically, if all of these properties develop and they do their improvements, will have even a much better impact to the area. So, it was their way of trying to soften the impact of not one person or one development could do all the improvements by themselves, but if they were to basically divide them amongst two other groups that could do the improvements independently of one another, but then they also have the financial resources to take care of those. So, and as far as the, you know, signal timing along the corridor, we have an actively managed traffic signal system, which we look at daily. Again, there are certain times of the day on Highway 55, it does get very congested along that corridor. And so those things are...yeah, we can only manage so much with signal timing changes, but that is being actively managed. And again, there are certain times of days it does get congested.
Well, I have to admit, I've been paying the toll rather than go through that area because...so the double left turn lanes is good. When they realign Marshall Carpenter to meet up with Carpenter Fire Station, you say, so what happens at Indian Wells? There's just nothing there? There's only going to be one light? Or there's not even going to be a light? You said it was great.
Again, when we're working with...again, we have to cross the CSX railroad, and in order to do that, there will be some existing crossings that will have to be closed. The first one will be the existing Carpenter Fire Station crossing right now that we have currently now. The second one will be the closing of Marshall Carpenter Road as well. So, all the movements will basically have to then take place at the realigned roadway.
And I think that's going to make a huge difference in the area.
It'll make, you know, again, in the future, you know, those that develop in the Indian Wells area, that will just become a T-intersection for all practical purposes, and so it must be...you know, that intersection itself will be much easier to navigate. The...I will also say that this particular rezoning case, also, we've asked them to consider putting a driveway access to come down to Indian Wells Road, so not all the traffic has to go out to Carpenter Fire Station Road. So they are planning to do that as part of their development as well, which should help disperse traffic, you know, in that area, and not one roadway has to take the full burden of the transportation in that area.
And the timing of this realignment, I think I saw where billed out was proposed to be 2018, but it sounded a little soft in the wording.
Well, it's...yeah, it's a little soft because we had to go through a series of environmental documents to go through that. We're still trying to get through that process. The other process is a lengthy review by the CSX railroad, getting them to buy off on this entire plan and the grade separation. And I think lastly is just the number of properties that we'll have to negotiate right away with. All takes time to do.
Okay. All right. No, that's good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Given that this is a recreational facility, I would think there'd be more people walking there and biking there. And I know that area on Carpenter Fire Station is a little narrow. So until this all gets done, how are we addressing the...not the car transportation, but the other transportation?
As far as, you know, bike compared, again, that's a function of...until Carpenter Fire Station Road gets fully developed, as far as a full thoroughfare width, you know, those things are going to be piecemealed as development occurs along that corridor and/or if the town or NC DOT decides to do a bigger project to put those facilities in. So, right now, there isn't any...I think there's still a lot of missing gaps along that corridor.
Because you have...right along Carpenter Fire Station, from that site out to the transit, looks like it's a very narrow piece of road there.
It is. There's also, I think, there is also a greenway trail, I think, that comes up from the southwest along a buffer that's being planned in there. So that could help also provide some pedestrian bicycle facilities along the way. And I think that may actually come...in fact, you see it on your map right now in the green dash. Those are some things that are kind of being looked at right now.
Can I do a follow-up on that? It's a long dotted line, which means we have a whole bunch of it that isn't done. So that greenway connectivity is likely to have to wait until all of those properties that it passes through are developed. Is that correct?
That's correct. Or until, again, as we traditionally do, as development occurs, we ask them to make these greenway trail improvements. Some of those missing gaps sometimes have to get supported by a town funds to do. So again, it's just a...it's called, you know, priorities throughout town. We've funded many, you know, great missing gaps in our greenway connections, and it just...again, that'll be looked at each year as we look at our budget and see what is our most important priorities as far as, you know, connecting greenways and bikeways.
I'm sorry, I interrupted yesterday.
No, I see that there's a blue, it looks like, from the site to the right. Is that a blue? Just my imagination that there is actually an existing sideways connector?
No, if it's a dashed line, that's a proposed roadside or street-side trail.
I'm thinking along Carpenter Fire Station there. Okay, yeah, just from the site out to...
And then this is a proposed greenway trail.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the north side. Okay.
Right. Other questions?
I have a few.
Please.
First, a comment to build on your statement about the sidewalks. As someone...now, I know this may not be a YMCA, but just go with it for a second. As someone who goes to the YMCA in the morning and runs in the neighborhoods around the YMCA in the morning when it's dark, I do sympathize with the idea that there could be quite a few people running in the very early morning hours in that area, and runners tend to find their own routes, whether or not they're on sidewalks. So that's just one caution I'll throw out there. But, Ms. Granen, more of my questions involve just the process here. This is not, at least in my experience, somewhat unusual of a case. We just had the land use plan, just a few meetings passed. And I'm curious, we have the town council public hearing, yet we don't have one, and I just want to make sure that it went through swimmingly with the town council, so there's no need here.
It was because there's been no changes. There's been no changes to the zoning conditions.
So the outdoor accessory use, not limited to a swimming pool?
It was a clarification, right, right. It was to make sure there was clear understanding that this is not going to be a water park or an outdoor athletic field. So, yeah, that was just a clarification. It was not...they were not increasing the square footage, or they were not changing buffers or anything like that. So, yes.
And if you'd indulge me just by putting up that chart that showed the layout of the existing buildings, the relief map that you had in the demonstration, I'd just like to look at that one more time, if I may.
I don't have the proposed building.
No, not the proposed. You...
Just the existing structure?
This is the one, yes. Yes, that's all I need. That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay. So this is the existing church and parking areas. Okay.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to look for a motion here.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number...hold on a second, 14 REZ-13 to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Well, I'll start by...I second this motion because I believe everything's been above board and done very well. There's not a lot of opposition, and the mitigation for any comments coming from the public have been dealt with very, very well and addressed the issue. So I see nothing that constitutes a red flag at this point in my mind.
Anyone else have something to say?
Well, I'll just concur with Mark's statements, and I also see a positive movement here in dealing...the attempt to deal with some of the transportation and traffic issues associated with this project, and as they also may impact other project development in Indian Wells. So I think that that kind of communication and outward looking is a real positive thing as we move forward.
Other thoughts? Usually, we have more to say, but frankly, this is a pretty easy one. And so I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero, and we're going to move on to our next case, which is REZ...or 14 REZ 24, the Indian Wells Road Properties Conditional Use Amendment.
This is a request to modify a zoning condition on a recently approved rezoning case that impacted 29.45 acres. The overall area is shown here, highlighted in yellow. Aerial view shows the subject property and its proximity to the Cameron Pond subdivision. The land use plan designation is medium density residential, shown in the yellow color, and then there's an area in green, which is Parks and Open Space designation. The existing zoning is residential eight conditional use. This is an exhibit that was presented with the previous rezoning case, 13 REZ 23, that showed a perimeter landscape buffer along the western property line, the hatched area shown here, here, and here along the western property line. And what is proposed is to remove only this portion that's adjacent to the Janet Flynn property that's located here, which was the subject property of a recently approved rezoning case. The owner of the property was not part of the original rezoning. She later talked with the applicant and said she wanted to sell the property, so they rezoned hers. They'd like to bring this all in together as part of the same development project. Because it was all part of a conditional use rezoning case that impacted several properties, we had to bring it in all together. So this resulted in the 800-foot notification and lots of phone calls. So staff learned the value of showing a map like that slide I just showed you with a bright red arrow saying it only applies to this buffer, because that was the only concerns that we had, was the neighbors over here in the Cameron Pond neighborhood wanted to make sure that the buffer in open space wasn't going away adjacent to them. So we did explain to them what the extent of the buffer removal was, and then as a result, there were no speakers or issues raised when this was presented to town council. So the value of a good map was definitely learned by staff. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here. If he would like to add anything, he did not feel the need to speak at the public hearing because the request was so simple, but if...unless you have any questions.
Only if you have questions.
So this concludes staff's presentation, and please let me know if you have any questions for me.
So at this point, do we have any questions?
Okay, it looks like a no-brainer, but just one. I assume that the perimeter buffer now applies to the new lot. You're just simply moving it from here?
No, we are removing it here. There is no perimeter buffer. This was offered because this lady wanted the buffer adjacent to her property.
So it wasn't required?
It was not a requirement, correct.
All right.
Correct.
Other questions? Well, I've got a quick one.
Okay.
We've got this rezoning, and we have the other rezoning on the adjacent property. And as I recall, that this was going to be a residential development, and I'm trying to remember the other property. That's a residential development as well, right?
The Flint property adjacent was just approved recently for exactly the same zoning classification, residential eight conditional use, correct.
What I'm going to get to here is we've had a couple cases now where we've had traffic mitigations not required because things were broken up into chunks that were just small enough. Is that a case with these two properties?
That's already been resolved, because both of these properties have already been rezoned to R eight conditional use. So the only thing being presented now is just the buffer. So you've already taken action.
We can't open it up and try to claw back to...
You can't take the R eight zoning away. The only thing before you for consideration is just that buffer.
Okay. Just trying to find a way to go back and claw back, but we can't do it.
Well, you did discuss it, you know, when it was presented previously.
Oh, I remember it. That's why I brought it up.
But it was already approved. So again, it's this property adjacent to it. Mrs. Flint's property is rezoned R eight conditional use.
Just for those of us that may not have been involved in those two cases, we've had several cases recently where property is coming in requesting rezoning in chunks, and the chunks are just small enough so they don't require a traffic impact analysis. And because they don't have a traffic impact analysis, they may not have the same level of traffic mitigation. of traffic mitigation, traffic impact mitigation. And so we haven't quite figured out how to deal with that aggregation problem. But it appears we may have had that here, but we don't have a way to do it here, so we're going to have to live with it, right?
Mr. Swanson might very much like to address this, if I may, although it's not germane to the removal of the buffer. If you recall, we talked about this at length. The reason why one piece was brought in later was, as Deborah said, the property owner of the Flint property was not interested in rezoning at the time. Once the rezoning of the parent parcel went through, now she concluded that, well, I don't really want to live here anymore. So it wasn't us trying to avoid the system or avoid doing a traffic impact analysis. I'd also like, if I may, ask staff to acknowledge, because of the densities that we offered, the open space, the buffers that we offered, these properties together, one is a 60-lot subdivision, we're adding 10 lots when we did the Flint property, there's a total of 70 lots. So with that total, it falls well below the traffic impact analysis criteria. So I guess I'd want to reassure you from an L-Star management standpoint, this is not something that we tried to manipulate the system or anything else. I want that to be on the record because you raising the question makes me think, you know, hey, I want to make sure this is not perceived as the way that we operate at L-Star. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I appreciate you making that clarification. And just some insight, we've got a couple cases coming to us where this indeed is an issue. And so it was fresh in my mind from the town council.
All right. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have other questions? A motion, please. Someone?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board forward case number 14, oops, sorry, 14-REZ-24 to town council with a recommendation for approval as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that as well.
I, I'm sorry. Nancy, you got to hand it first. It's her first second.
The more the merrier.
Discussion. This one's, these are probably the two simplest cases we've ever had. It's a great way to start a new, new board. In that case, I'm going to call this for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries eight to zero. And then we're going to drop down to our last piece of new business, and that is that we have lost our vice chair, who was turned out, and so we need to replace him. And so I would like to request nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Mark, evangelista.
Do we have a nomination for Mark? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a chorus of seconds. Buck gets the second. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, I believe legally I can say he is elected by acclamation? Or do we have to have a vote? Have the vote? Okay. All those in favor of having Mark evangelista as our vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I hope you don't regret it. I believe that concludes our business. All we need now is a motion to adjourn.
No, we have meeting dates.
Meeting schedule.
Oh, I apologize. We have before you a tentative meeting schedule for the coming calendar year. This, I believe, starts in January, right? And do we need to accept it or move to accept it? Or is this just a, we thank you very much for giving us the schedule?
The purpose of this is to provide this to you in advance before the council adopts the schedule to see if there's any overwhelming issues among the members of the dates here. Like if there were several members that couldn't make one date, we could propose to the clerk to potentially move that date.
Do we have to do that tonight? Because I think several of our members may be seeing this for the first time and...
Well, we sent it out to everyone in advance. That's just a hard copy.
Well, I don't have a problem with December 21st, but I suspect that attendance might be light if we could move that earlier.
What do you think?
I mean, does anybody, I don't know if anyone else, I just wanted to raise that issue.
Christmas week is a tough week. A couple of years ago, we had one on December 21st, and the cases got pulled because nobody wanted to be here in Christmas.
Certainly. We can explore that with the town clerk and see if that could be done.
I assume this is all tied in with the council meetings as well?
Yeah, they're tied with council meetings, but they're also tied with all the other meetings that go on with the town. So we can see if that could maybe be moved up or a different day of the week before. Yes?
Now, just as a point of clarification, that is December 21st, 2015.
That's correct. Uh-huh. Right. This calendar for this year is already locked. We don't get to change that. Any other suggestions?
Is it possible to, is it possible to move to September 14th date?
Is that, that's a work session?
Yes.
Okay.
This is my birthday, so I don't know what I have planned yet, or someone has planned for me, but I'm not sure I want to spend my whole...
We were going to give you a party.
You clearly haven't seen the refreshments at work sessions.
I have not. I have not, so.
Okay.
Stick with the party.
We can entertain that. If other boards and members are okay with that, we can look at a different day.
Fine. And reality is that we don't have all of the scheduled work sessions.
Okay.
This year, I think we had maybe...
Yeah, we just have a hold, hold on that date in case we need one, but it's hard to say. But we can look into, see if we can have it on a different day.
Let's do that. Are you all okay having a work session before a regularly scheduled meeting? We've done that in a couple of cases to avoid you having to truck all the way over to town hall twice.
You know, the only problem I have with those is, I remember having those, and it kind of cut off any questions. We were so pressed for time...
It does...
That, that we were told to hold questions till the end, and the end, we were walking in here. So, I mean, assuming everyone else is okay with coming twice in the month, I would prefer to have them separate.
All right. That's a good point.
I agree.
Same here.
All right. Is that the input you require? Do you need any...
Yes, we don't need a vote or anything, just some feedback. And I can't promise you anything, but I will see if we can make adjustments to these dates.
Thank you.
And get back to you. Okay? Thank you.
In that case, I, we need a motion to adjourn, and I'm going to ask one of our new members to step up here.
So moved.
No, you need to say.
Say it out. I moved, I moved that we adjourn.
Do we have a second from a new member?
A second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.